I call to order this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council on this Wednesday, November sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Clerk, will you have the roll call?
Councilmember ViBee.
Present.
Councilmember Fertado.
Here.
Councilmember Schizola.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Landry.
Present.
Thank you. We will now do the pledge of allegiance. You'll stand.
Stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have no special presentations and proclamations, and there are no communications. City Attorney, do we have any reportable items to mark this session?
We do not.
Thank you. I'm now going to move on to oral requests, and this is the portion of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on a matter not on the agenda. And if you wish to speak, we request, although you're not required to fill out a speaker's card, will be limited to two minutes, and while we cannot discuss or take action on items, we may be able to instruct staff accordingly on oral requests. So I do have a few cards, and I'll go in the order we receive them, and if there are any additional ones, please hand them to Andrea or our clerk. So first, we have Dr. Jennifer Taylor Mendoza.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Landry and Vice Mayor Lopez. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Dr. Jennifer Taylor Mendoza, and I like to say I'm the proud president of West Valley College. I wanted to take this opportunity just to introduce myself and would love to be invited back to do a more formal presentation so you can hear about the wonderful things that we're doing at West Valley College. I've been in education nearly twenty-five years, and I'm on my second year at West Valley College, and we are doing amazing things to really remove barriers for our students. We are celebrating our sixtieth, and I got to see some of you at the gala. And of course, you know, we have a special connection, seeing that West Valley College started at Campbell Grammar School. And so I just wanted to come before you today to say hello, to really just thank you for all of your support that you've given us and let you know about two events coming up. We have a holiday party, which is December fifth, that you're going to receive an invitation, as well as our signature event, Tour de Saratoga, which is going to be really fun. Some of you were there last year, but it's going to be July nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. And so really looking forward to the opportunity to come back and do a more formal presentation. Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, I'm going to repeat that because my microphone is off, just for those online. Now we have Keith Joseph. Thank you.
And I'm going to be speaking about the proclamation that's been requested and what's going on between Israel and Gaza. I grew up in a Jewish neighborhood of West Los Angeles. I was six years old when the state of Israel was formed and quite aware of what happened there. Lived in on the creek for many years, but moved down here in two thousand and seventeen because our daughter Diana was also spoken here. She and her family have lived here for a long time. We moved down here to be with them. A lot has been said about the war between Israel and Gaza. But I want to address it a little bit differently. I see this as a problem of human beings, human beings being really nasty to each other. And it's gone on for a very, that's gone on forever. And just some examples of recent things that have happened. The Ukrainian victims of Putin's war, one awful thing, the children that were separated from their parents at the US Mexico border. That was a terrible thing, the Hiroshima bomb, the Nagasaki bomb, firebombing that took place in World War Two. All these horrific things that happened and left a lot of very damaged people. And that's my concern. I'm kind of a worrier. It worries me what's going on between Israel and Palestine and Hamas is there are going to be people that are going to survive. And the survivors are going to be very angry. And raising the future generation of terrorists, and that's a reason for fighting hostess.
Thank you. Eli Ruska.
I am a Campbell resident, been here since nineteen seventy-six with my family. And I just want to read a very short poem and talk about the author a little bit. It's called If I Must Die. If I must die, you must live to tell my story, to sell my things, to buy a piece of cloth and some strings, make it white with a large tail. So that a child somewhere in Gaza, while looking in the eye of heaven, awaiting his dad who left in a blaze and bid no one farewell, not even his flesh, not even to himself, sees the kite, my kite you made, flying up above, and thinks for a moment, an angel is there, bringing back love. If I must die, let it bring hope, let it be a story. This was written by Rifa Alarera, a prominent Palestinian poet, writer, father of six, and professor of comparative literature at the Islamic University of Gaza. He was born in Gaza in nineteen seventy-nine, killed the evening of December sixth in northern Gaza at the start of the twenty-twenty-three Israel Hamas war, along with his brother, his brother's son, his sister, and her three children. Then, four months later, on April twenty-sixth, his eldest daughter and his newborn grandchild were killed in an Israeli raid under Gaza City Home. As a concerned citizen of Campbell, I request Campbell City Council to join over a hundred cities like Chicago, San Francisco, Sacramento, to pass a resolution for immediate ceasefire in Palestine for recognition of Palestinian rights, and instead of weapons, to send humanitarian aid to Gaza to those in the areas of Palestine where there's need. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Maria Ruska.
Hello, my name is Maria Ruska. We've been living in Campbell since nineteen seventy-nine, raised our children here. And I know that whoever has been in charge here has been done doing a wonderful job. Campbell, when we moved here, was a very sleepy little town, and now it's a bustling, vibrant town. So, and also during all these years, Campbell has gotten a reputation of being progressive, progressive, thinking ahead, seeing what Campbell needs, what people need, and you respond. We, this is the second time we come here. We were here in June, and we were begging to, for Campbell to make us stand, to stand up and say enough is enough to join the other cities. There are other a hundred and fifty cities in the United States. There is Sacramento, join Sacramento, join San Francisco to, for a resolution. So how many more times do we have to come here to make you understand, to make us stand? I guess you're not going to respond now, but please, please. It doesn't take that long to make a resolution. Just stand up. We've been through the Vietnam War in Berkeley, you know, we've been through the free speech movement. We're not stopping. I'm here just as a resident, as a humanitarian. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Ward.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I too hear it's back in June, and we asked for a discussion on a ceasefire in Gaza to be included as an agenda item. This hasn't happened, so I'm asking you again to please consider this. I don't want our tax dollars being spent on bombs that are killing innocent civilians in Gaza. Right now, Congress is ignoring the legal laws that prevent the US government from providing aid to foreign security forces that have committed gross violations of human rights. I have four children. Both my parents have died, and it was hard enough burying my parents. That's the right way, man. That's the right order of things. Nobody should have to bury their child. At some point, the war will have to stop. I would like you to please consider putting a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you can sit up if you'd like. We also have a card from Elizabeth Ward for us.
Hello, me again. First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for installing the new crosswalk on Campbell Avenue between Dot and Llewellyn. I live on Llewellyn, and I think it makes a big difference. The seniors walking across from Ring Pan, the children going to SUI CSI. I'm really concerned that the speed limit in that section from Winchester to Santa Mas Expressway is thirty-five miles an hour. A thirty-five miles an hour stopping distance is about a hundred and thirty feet. If you reduce it down to twenty-five miles an hour, that goes down to eighty-five feet. Right now, cars are not stopping. They're not stopping at that first crosswalk that's been in there for a while, even the lights are flashing. They're not stopping now. I've walked my dog across that crosswalk, and I'll keep going through. I had a look, the time difference in theory of reducing the speed limit from thirty-five miles an hour down to twenty-five miles an hour is roughly twenty seconds, but I'm an experimentalist, so I drove it several times, in fact, between Askem and Santa Mas Expressway. And the bigger variation in time is actually due to whether you hit traffic lights, whether the VTA is going through, that kind of thing. So in practice, if you could reduce that speed limit down to twenty-five miles an hour, the section from certainly Winchester out to Santa Mas Expressway, it wouldn't actually make that much difference for drivers, but it would make a huge difference in terms of safety for cyclists and pedestrians. I was going to wait until the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting, go and talk to them, but I'm really concerned some just going to have a nasty accident. The mortality rate at twenty-five miles an hour is about four percent. It doesn't double that to over ten percent at thirty-five miles an hour. So I'm glad you'd please consider reducing the speed limit for that section of the road. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other members of the public wishing to speak? No? Okay. If not, we'll move on to council announcements. Are you interested in advising the council on matters relating to the development and maintenance of public recreation and park facilities? Would you like to provide advice relating to community services programs? Then the Parks and Recreation Commission is for you. The city clerk's office is currently accepting applications and will be accepted until Monday, November eleventh at five P M. For more information, please visit our Boards and Commission webpage on the city's website at campbellca.gov, or call the city clerk's office at four oh eight eight six six two one one seven. Veterans Day occurs on November eleventh every year in the United States in honor of the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month, signaling the end of World War One. Veterans Day is a day dedicated to honor all military veterans of all wars. It is an opportunity to thank those who have served our country. However, it's more than just one day, so thank a veteran anytime you can. The Campbell Veterans Memorial Foundation will host its annual Veterans Day ceremony at nine A M. on Monday, November eleventh, on the Orchard City Green located at City Hall. For more information, please visit campleveteransmemorial.org. You are cordially invited to the Campbell Veterans Memorial Foundation seventeenth anniversary saluting our veterans gala dinner and fundraiser on Saturday, November sixteenth at five P M. For more information, please visit campleveteransmemorial.org. We're excited to announce the thirtieth anniversary of holidays at the Ainsley House. Holiday tours begin every Thursday through Sunday, November fourteenth through December twenty-second. The house beautifully decorated the theme holiday heritage created by local businesses, community organizations, and dedicated volunteers. There are plenty of events to join, including photos with Santa on Saturday, November twenty-third, the Campbell Museum Foundation's holiday tea and tour fundraiser on the first two weekends in December, two enchanting evening events on December nineteenth and December twenty-second, offering a magical opportunity to see the house lit up at night. And the museum will feature a holiday boutique for all your gift shopping needs. For all holiday information and event registration, please visit camplemuseums.com. We're now moving on to the consent calendar, and these are items that are considered routine and can be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items unless a request to pull is made by a member of the city council, city staff, or a member of the public. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent calendar prior to the time the council votes approve. If removed, it'll be discussed in the order in which it appears. So do you have any council members, staff, or members of the public that would like to pull an item from a consent calendar? If not, I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I'm sorry, I heard Councilmember Fertado first. Sorry, Mayor, but we'll, Clerk, could we have the roll?
Councilmember ViBee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye.
Great, that item passes. We're now moving on to public hearings and introduction of ordinances. First, we have a resolution approving use of supplemental law enforcement service funds and related budget adjustments, and our presenter will be Police Chief Gary Bird. Oh, Captain White. Sorry about that.
Got a substitute today. Madam Mayor, Council, thank you. In July of nineteen ninety-six, California approved A B thirty-two twenty-nine, the citizens' option for public safety or COFs. And in July two thousand, A B twenty-eight eighty-five extended this program indefinitely. This bill appropriated a hundred million from the State General Fund for distribution to local law enforcement agencies for frontline municipal police services. One of the key features of the COFs funds is that they should only be used to supplement and not supplant existing funding for law enforcement services. Historically, the police department has used these funds to fund things like our one C S O, who assists with traffic enforcement and our abandoned vehicle program. We've used it for equipment historically, like bulletproof vests and upfitting for canine vehicles. And more recently this year, our proposed use is again the community service officer, the point nine pay for the community service officer, and then the remaining funds to be used for police equipment specifically for public safety cameras and other things associated to our real plan. That being said, the staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution to authorize the use of supplemental law enforcement service funds to fund community service officer and approve a budget adjustment to allocate the remaining plus a balance towards police equipment for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Let's go to motion. I'm sorry, to questions from council before we do comments. Does anyone have a question? Okay, I don't see any questions, so I will now open the public hearing. Is there any from the public wishing to speak on this item? No, closing the public hearing, any comments or discussion from council? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
A motion in a second. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Councilmember ViBee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye.
Great, that item passes. So now we move on to new business, item ten. And this is accept a thirty-five thousand dollar donation from the Friends of the Heritage Theater toward the purchase of a new soundboard system. And we have, as our presenter, Recreation Community Services Director Natasha Bissell.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. So tonight, we have the item before you to accept a donation of thirty-five thousand dollars from Friends of the Heritage Theater, and we have Chris Graffler here to provide the check to the city, in addition to that, to approve a budget adjustment to the balance of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty cents from our Preservation and Enhancement Fund to finish out the purchase of a new soundboard system. The soundboard that is in the building is currently the same one that was installed when we reopened the building in two thousand and four. So I am not a technical person, but it's been explained to me that it's like using an eight-track system in digital age. It works, and it provides sound, but it's not the quality that professional artists are looking for. And so with the approval of the two resolutions before you this evening, one to accept the donation and the other to do the budget adjustment and authorize the purchase, it would allow the Heritage Theater to kind of step into this new generation of audio for our theater. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have Chris here this evening.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Chris. Deeply appreciate it. Do you have any questions from the council? No questions? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? No? Any comments or discussion from council?
I just have a brief comment. I'd like to thank the Friends of the Heritage Theater very much for this donation. It's very generous, and I agree with Natasha, the fact that we need to keep our equipment updated. We oftentimes have very modern, forward-thinking entertainers, and they feel it's very important, which I understand, of course, that their music be appropriately accompanied by quality equipment. So this is a great addition. I'm glad the theater has had some really great shows and entertainment over the years, and it's nice to keep up with this, and the Friends have supported us for years, so thank you.
And this helps us to attract, it helps the city actually to attract some bigger-name groups as well, because they like to see the newer equipment. So a lot of them are very impressed with the new lighting system and the hazing system that we helped purchase as well, so.
So you're telling me there's still a chance for Mattel?
Hey, we had Cherry and Michael Shanker from Scorpions, so you know, you never know.
Great, and I see Mayor Landry has her hand raised.
Yeah, I just want to really thank you guys for the contribution. I was there when the new lighting system got put in, so it's great to now have the sound be of the same caliber as the lighting. So just thank you guys very much for the contribution. I know the community will be looking forward to better performances.
Thank you. Councilmember ViBee.
And I want to echo the comments and also want to thank you, Chris, and the Friends of the Heritage Theater Board that support the theater, and it's a great partnership, and it's important that we all work together to have a facility that really can attract top-quality entertainment and a place for our residents to enjoy that. So thank you very much.
By the way, this is, this is not donation money per se. This is money we've raised from running the concession stand. So quite literally, that's thirty-five thousand dollars worth of candy bars and glasses of wine.
Yeah, that's a lot of candy bars and.
That's a lot.
I also just want to echo my appreciation for the donation, but also the work and hours that you put in. And I'm really hopeful to see, I think it'll make a big difference, and so really look forward. I think it's a very wise investment. It's a position for long. Much appreciated. Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion for the item. Be happy to make that motion, staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Can we have the roll?
Councilmember ViBee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye.
Great. Now we have unfinished business, which is item eleven, and this is a resolution authorizing the execution of a second amendment to the consultants' consultant services agreement with Nino and Moore, and in an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars for additional materials testing and inspection services for the Mezero Police Operations Building and Library renovation projects, and the execution of any additional amendments up to and within twenty percent of this amount, not to exceed thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-two between both projects. And we have director, Public Works Director Todd Capurso.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. Hello to the mayor way up in Sacramento, and hello to the council members as well. Hope you're all doing well tonight. I'm sure you're all very familiar with our Mezero projects, and in building, two buildings, you require a fair amount of inspection services. You know, for typical construction, this is the type of inspection that would typically be things for code compliance, which you would get through a more traditional type of inspection. However, the type of construction that we're doing on these two buildings requires a fair amount of what's called special inspections, and that involves materials testing and then inspections of welds and compaction and concrete slabs and elements of that sort. As such, when we were here in front of you about a year ago, and we identified that the Mezero program had collectively allocated approximately six hundred and ten thousand for special inspections and materials testing for both of the two Mezero projects. And at that time, we requested council authorization to enter into, to enter into two separate agreements with a firm called Nino and Moore for the special inspection in a total amount of two hundred and twelve thousand, which the council approved. That agreement is essentially for on-demand services, so these are essentially billed at the rate that the firms have proposed to the city, and then we draw down upon the contract as the services are performed. Since construction has begun, there have been several issues which have arisen, both projects that require additional resources of both materials testing and inspections. This is not an all exhaustive list, but these include additional soil testing, compaction tests, expanded sidewalk replacement, extra trenching, concrete slab replacement, onsite welding inspection, structural changes, and roofing replacement, particularly at the library. This also recognizes that there was an expanded construction schedule for both projects since we have started. So with all these things in mind, we have been working with Nino and Moore to see what additional services would be needed, and we have come up with a proposal from them in a total amount between the two projects of a hundred and eighty-two thousand. So staff is requesting authorization to execute that change. That would be the second amendment to the project that would bring the total up to four hundred and two thousand, which is still well below our Mezero allocation of six hundred and ten thousand. So we think we are in very good shape at that point, and this should take us ideally throughout the. throughout the remainder of the projects, but we are requesting the additional twenty percent, as the vice mayor mentioned, in, in the event that we uh, that we exhaust that amount and need to make additional changes or contract amendments. Uh, I would also like to take this opportunity to introduce to those of you who don't already know, but our senior public works construction, senior public works project manager, Francisco Castellanos is here in the evening, and if you have any hard questions, he'll be the one answering them. So that concludes what I have to say this evening and will hope, happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions from the council? Um, I, I have a question, Todd, and just for the benefit of members of the public, um, when, when I was, um, when I learned about this, um item, I was curious to hear what kind of lessons learned we, we've taken from, from the kind of issues that rose that, that you mentioned. Um, just to try to make sure that doesn't happen uh again in the future, or, or just to protect the city um from any other kind of um delays like that.
Well, that's kind of a, a, a difficult question to, to answer be, because uh, you, you, you're trying to balance the needs of the project without overcommitting funds at, at the, at the time, right? So as I mentioned earlier, we had allocated six hundred and, six hundred thousand or so uh, uh, for this purpose that would be, that we thought might be needed for the, for the special inspections and materials testing across both projects. Yet, if you encumber that entire amount upfront, you're really kind of locking up those funds so they can't be used elsewhere. So it's really kind of a, of, of a change of approach. If, if you want to be overly uh conservative and, and, and encumber all that funding upfront, or do you want to encumber what you need as you go? So we have gone with, with the, with the latter approach. So our, our initial proposal and working with Nunean Moore was in that two hundred and twelve thousand, which obviously proved to be insufficient. So I, I think uh maybe where we could have been, we maybe should have allowed for, for, you know, some additional changes, particularly uh on the library building. Uh, the library building has been maybe a little more challenging because there have been some unanticipated unanticipated conditions. It had, had to do with the material that was on the roof and uh some other elements that had to be removed before we could progress. And uh, I would like to think that most of those are now behind us, but I do believe that uh, when, when, anytime you're dealing with an existing facility and, and, and you're modifying something that maybe hasn't been opened up for something like fifty years, you're bound to find some level of unexpected conditions. Uh, that being said, that is not true on the police building. I think, I think on the police building, it's just a very large project and we've had to kind of change some of our our strategies and how we're doing the, the structural steel inspections. You know, some of the welds were originally intended to be done, the weld inspections were intended were intended to be shop inspections. That strategy was modified along the way to where they became field inspections. And there are always changes along the way where you have to modify, have to modify the layout of a sidewalk, or you have to do additional compaction testing because something was installed and need to be uninstalled and then reinstalled. So I think the lesson there is maybe we should have been a little more generous with our original allocations, but but again, we didn't want to over, uh, over encumber funds and then, you know, and then kind of lock them up to where they couldn't be used for anything else. All that being said, I think the, the positive of all this is that we still anticipate that we will spend less than what was originally allocated, which is a good thing, but it's more than what the council initially approved, which is why, which is why we're back. So hopefully this will be the last time you see us on this issue.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, oh, uh, yeah, uh, yes, Mayor Landry.
Uh, Todd, you left, gave a list of what the extra testing, how many of those have resulted in a cost change order to the project?
This would be a great opportunity for Francisco to uh make his way to the podium.
Hi, everyone. So essentially, uh, every time we have a change order due to a design change or any change in scope that uh creates new scope or changes something, it may create the need for inspection that wasn't part of the original scope. So everything that changes in that manner has to be, may require an inspection. So every cha- so it's not that we have inspections that cause change orders, it's change orders that cause inspections. So the re-roofing was a change order because we found uh some material that we had to remove. And now that requires uh nailing and additional shearing. So all of that requires additional testing. So it's kind of that thing. Whenever we do something extra, we have to account for uh the special inspections that come with that.
I, I, I'm trying to figure out how much we've spent on change orders. Like you said, the, the roof, you needed the extra change that then necessitated the inspection, but how much are these change orders equalling?
Oh, that change order, it's, they're not directly related. They're not, uh, how do I put this? They're not it's not the same impact. For instance, doing something as, let's say, changing some electrical circuit doesn't require special inspections. Doing concrete work, like the sidewalk that we had to replace at the, uh, the perimeter of the police, that requires compaction and testing. So that's so it, it's not, it doesn't really correlate for like the amount of one change order that could be for a certain portion of scope, doesn't necessarily trigger an inspection.
No, I understand that. I guess I'm trying to figure out, we're spending an extra two hundred thousand dollars on inspections. How much change orders were needed? But, you know, do we have a dollar value of we spent three hundred thousand in change orders that we now need this inspection for?
Uh, well, I do have to go through the log. It's separated. I don't have that on hand, but like I was saying, it's not all those change orders cause inspections. That, that's, I would have to go through the log and highlight which ones relate to inspection and which ones do not.
Okay, maybe you can provide Brian with that information.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, not seeing any other questions, um, I'll go to um public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? Um, no, uh, bring it back for council discussion. Um, any comments? Uh, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move the adoption of the resolution identified in uh item number eleven on the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second, can we have the roll?
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye.
Great, um, and that takes us to item twelve, which is our climate action and adaptation plan, vulnerability assessment and outreach results. And presenting, we have environmental program specialist Tiffany Huns.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here tonight, um, as Vice Mayor Lopez just said, to give an update on our cap, which includes the uh, climate change vulnerability assessment, um, which includes a look at the critical facilities in Campbell, uh, where vulnerable communities exist in Campbell, where, what climate hazards we are um expected to deal with in coming years and the impacts of those hazards, as well as provide an update on the community outreach that we've done to date. Um, so the city is committed to addressing climate change. Um, it is an item in our general plan. You all have adopted sustainability as a priority. Um, and I'm grateful to be here working on this. Uh, so in February, we awarded the contract to Rincon and they've been supporting this effort. Um, again, we were here in April to kick that off. Uh, I was here in September to present the greenhouse gas inventory. Here tonight to talk about the rest of the sort of existing conditions, um, research as part of this cap. Um, and then we'll plan to come back for a study session in early twenty twenty-five to talk about the priorities for the cap, different scenarios, um, and what measures and actions we could take to meet the goals of the cap, um, and then hopefully have a draft plan in spring and adoption in the fall. So the climate change vulnerability assessment evaluates how climate change is anticipated to impact Campbell. Um, it mostly uses data from Santa Clara County Silicon Valley two-point-O project, um, which is a tool that allows you to uh, look at a geographic area in the county and see how different hazards might affect uh the city um, in different emissions scenarios and different timelines. Um, so what we're trying to answer with this analysis is what climate hazards um is Campbell most vulnerable to and what are those impacts that we might expect? And then where vulnerable communities are located in the city. So Rincon mapped these uh critical facilities, which include city facilities, community resources, social services, healthcare services and affordable housing, where those exist on Campbell. I know those icons are quite small, so you can't see all of it um, in full detail here, but we did map where all of these facilities exist um, as well as where anticipated flooding would take place. So in the hundred-year floodplain, you see both creeks highlighted there. Those are areas that are susceptible to riverine flooding. Um, and then the five-hundred-year floodplain is just south of the city. Um, that study did not include uh in city limits of Campbell, so there might be some flooding in the southern uh border of the city to be anticipated. We also, like I said, mapped where vulnerable populations exist. Uh, different organizations define vulnerability differently. Uh, so we looked at a combination of different data sources, um, including again, that Silicon Valley two-point-O project. They uh, created an index of vulnerability, uh, looking at several different indicators. Um, there's also MTC has equity priority communities that they map. Um, and then uh San Francisco BCDC also has vulnerable communities, um, an indicator. Um, and then we also took this map to uh the Climate Action um Community Advisory Committee and asked for their feedback on this as well, which is where you see the area in purple, um, really highlighting along the creek, especially with unhoused populations in Campbell. Um, so on the right, there are just a list of some of the indicators that are included here, um, which include seniors, children, low-income households, people of color, uh, households with limited vehicle access, low educational attainment, uninsured people, individuals with a disability, with health concerns or food insecurity. So this is a long list and these indices help us sort of bring a lot of data points together, um, to highlight key areas on a map that we need to consider. So the hazards that we looked at are extreme heat, air quality, uh flooding and drought. Um, there are other hazards that other parts um, of this area might be impacted by, like sea level rise. Um, that is not anticipated to impact Campbell, so we really focused on what we need to be worried about here. Um, and then looked at those four hazards through the lens of public health and safety, buildings and property impacts to transportation, infrastructure and natural ecosystems, and tried to figure out what would be impacted and how. Uh, so the first hazard is extreme heat, which is defined as five or more days at ninety-six degrees Fahrenheit or higher. Um, right now, we see about four of these events in a year. Um, by twenty-one hundred, we are expected to see about twenty-four events, which some quick back-of-the-map can nap, map is over a hundred and twenty days of extreme heat every year. Um, this will impact the community because public health um will be impacted, especially, especially vulnerable community members um, with higher temperatures, especially if folks don't have access to air conditioning. There can be a lot of health impacts with that. Um, anyone who's taking medications, sometimes health or sometimes medications can be impacted uh by extreme heat. You also start to see deterioration of materials, whether that's wood, metal, concrete or asphalt, that can affect buildings and transportation infrastructure. Um, and of course, plant and wildlife stress, um, and eventually a shift in species with rising temperatures. Uh, the next climate hazard is air quality. Um, so there will be an increase in air pollution despite greenhouse gas reductions from improvements in technology. Um, that's because ozone formation increases with higher temperatures, vegetation emits more uh natural hydrocarbons. Your air conditioning has to work harder. There are greater demands on power plants, so you're still going to see those rise in emissions, again, even um, with cuts that we might see. Um, there will also be um an anticipated increase in wildfires in the surrounding area, which will impact our air quality. Um, and all of these um additional pollutants uh can create respiratory illnesses um, or worsen existing health conditions, and again, will um cause stress for plant and wildlife. Uh, the next hazard is flooding. Um, so again, we mapped um the hundred and five-hundred-year floodplain um, and impacts to the community there are that you might see arise in infectious diseases um as flooding happens. Um, it can also affect buildings, can lead to mold growth. Mold can cause a lot of health concerns. Um, you'll also see soil erosion and vegetation removal, which can decrease flood control, carbon storage, um, and a disruption to wildlife. And the fourth climate hazard is drought, um, which is a, dry spells um are expected to occur every six to eight years by twenty-fifty and increasing every three to four years by twenty-one hundred. Um, so you might see potential water supply challenges across California. Um, and there would be increased irrigation requirements for maintaining landscaping paired with potential restrictions, um, which would again create disruption for vegetation and habitat. So this is just sort of a quick summary table that um captures everything I just covered of looking at those four hazards through those four impact areas, um, of who and what will be affected by these different hazards. So shifting gears on a more positive note, uh, we've done a lot of community engagement as part of this process. So one of the key uh pillars was setting up this community advisory committee, which has thirteen members. Um, it includes students, residents, uh, business owners, workers in Campbell. It's a very diverse group. Um, and they have been um you know, really great and as like a working group to run ideas by, like we said, got, we got feedback on the map. Um, before we go out and do any community engagement, we run it by that group. We discuss it, we get feedback, we continue to iterate. Um, we've also set up CBO partnerships uh with organizations like Actara, Breathe California, Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action and Sierra Club, as well as Mothers Out Front. Um, we've been working closely with them. They've both helped amplify any of the work that we're doing. So when we launched a survey, they helped share that out. Um, but they're also hosting their own events or doing pop-ups or tabling at events around Campbell to help get the word out of the work that we're doing and get feedback from the community. Uh, so I briefly mentioned the survey that we did. So we launched a survey from June to August. It was open for about eight weeks, um, trying to get a handle on sort of the existing conditions of what people care about, what their concerns are, what things they've done or interested in doing. Um, we received four hundred and seventy responses on that survey. Um, we promoted it across the city in a variety of channels. We emailed folks. Um, we announced it at different meetings, uh, at different city meetings. Um, again, we had the advisory committee help share out the survey as well. Uh, we took flyers to businesses in Campbell. We emailed the city staff. Uh, we promoted it at two farmers markets um, and posted on social media and the city website. So we really tried to get the word out, to get folks to participate in the survey, to get as much feedback as possible. So most respondents that took the survey are longstanding Campbell community members, so ten or more years, that either live in the city or work in the city, or maybe even both. Um, nearly half of the respondents were residents, so thirty-seven percent homeowners, thirteen percent renters, and about a third were employees who worked in Campbell. I won't go through all of the results of the survey. Um, they are attached in the staff report if you want to review those. Um, but the vast majority of people who took the surveys that they have noticed uh weather patterns changing in Campbell in the time that they've been here, and they are concerned about climate change, whether that's extremely concerned or somewhat concerned. The, you know, severity of their concerns vary, but it is a concern. This is something that our community cares deeply about. Um, when we asked about specific uh hazards, uh, the ones that were the most prevalent to the community were drought, heat and wildfire smoke, which is in line with the ones that we are most anticipated to be impacted by um, according to the research. Uh, we also asked folks how they get around town. Uh, no surprise that the majority of folks drive, but we do see a lot more uh different multimodal transportation options, especially when it comes to recreation. Um, and people did say, uh, we also asked what would convince them to take a more active mode of transportation or take transit more, and we got really great feedback um about better transit routes, better connectivity throughout our city, more shade to, you know, be able to walk and not be in the sun and in the heat. more shade to, you know, be able to walk and not be in the sun and in the heat. We asked about what improvements people have made to their home. You can see a lot of people have made water conservation measures or installed energy-efficient appliances. Less people have installed heat pump water heating or heat pump heating and cooling. But we see a lot of folks that are interested in doing this. So the next step of the work is to help educate people on what those appliances are and how they can install them, what they need to do. And again, as we've talked about, all of the incentives incentives that are available at the local level, state level, federal level for these types of projects. We also asked folks about food waste, and you can see that just over half are separating out organics, which, as you know, in Campbell, we can separate those out, and those get composted. So we have work to do in educating people on how to do that and making sure across the city, there are opportunities to do that, so things are not going in our landfills. We also asked about which co-benefits of climate action are most important. And the number one answer there was air and water quality. Folks who took this survey seem very concerned about health, and that is a big priority that goes hand in hand with climate action. So key takeaway, so that Campbell is moderately protected from several climate hazards. We don't have to worry about wildfires here. We don't have to worry about sea level rise. But we do have to worry about heat, air quality, flooding, and drought. And these concerns will only grow with time. And the hazards are more likely to impact vulnerable communities and natural ecosystems, but our infrastructure still is at risk. So adaptation strategies should be focused on building resiliency with a focus on health and safety. And we can consider things like tree planting, which has a lot of co-benefits, both carbon storage as well as cooling, green stormwater infrastructure, water reuse. There are a lot of different mitigation and adaptation measures that we can consider to help build resiliency. And the community feedback will continue to inform the cap process. We are doing a ton of engagement now with the CBOs. We're wrapping up sort of the next phase of engagement, which is asking people about their visions and their priorities for the future of Campbell. So when we come back early next year for a study session to discuss the different scenarios and actions and measures that might go into this cap, we'll be able to come to you with a lot of community input of what the Campbell community has said is important to them. So that is all for my presentation this evening. If you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Is there, do you have any questions from council members, I see Mayor Landry?
Yeah, can you guys take down that slide? It's easier to see the change there, thank you. So Tiffany, when the consultant first came to talk to us and asked us things that we were concerned about, I brought up the water temperature in the creek. And I didn't read anywhere that there was this, it said, you know, temperature's going to affect wildlife, but it didn't really say anything about the temperature of the water. And the reason I'm asking, like, what did we do? Because as we go into the next phase about what we can do, is the rise in water temperature in the creek going to affect what we do? Like more shade or something? So where is that in all of this analysis?
Yeah, we definitely take a note of that. I've got both Ryan and Camila on the phone here tonight. If either of them want to chime in on what you've done in other cities and how that's been taken into account. I know the Silicon Valley 2.0 tool doesn't specifically talk about water temperature, more just heat rising in general. But Ryan or Camila, you might have more to add to that.
Yeah, you know, it's a great question, and I do remember you bringing it up the first time we chatted, I think. Off the top of my head, I would want to have a conversation with some of our biologists on stuff, and we can kind of look into some of the ecosystem impacts there. And we'd have to do a little bit of digging around to try to see what the what the, quantify the impacts to water temperature. And I think, from what I understand, there's like shading and a lot of other things that go into how that is going to change, like rather than just temperature. So we'd have to dig around a little bit and see if there's some variables we can look at to get you some of that information.
That would be great. And one of the, couple of the reasons why I've been asking is we have a beaver dam. I think I told you guys there was a beaver cam for a while that you could watch them. The salmon are coming back up. We have fish migration. And so I'm just, like, as we move forward into solutions, I don't want us to forget that the water temperature is directly affecting the ecosystem around the creek. And then my other question, a couple of years ago, I was on the Water District Policy Advisory Committee, and they showed maps of the sea level, water, sea level water rising. And they said the impact to inland communities are the storm drain backups and how much water would come back up the pipes into the drainage. And I haven't heard a lot since then. I've not heard that in any conversation. Is that still some level of concern? Because you said sea level rise won't directly affect us, but will it be impacting the storm drains?
That is something that we've seen in some other communities closer to the bay. I don't think that will directly impact Campbell, but it's something that we can double-check on. Like, we're working in San Mateo County a little bit, and some of those cities that are, like, touching the bay have had issues where sea level, like higher than normal sea level rise, especially with king tides, is creating backup in some of their drains. But I don't, again, don't think that'll be an issue for Campbell.
And my last question is, it was hard, been a hard time kind of zooming in on the map. I'm on my local iPad. Is our corporation yard subject to flooding? Because of how low of elevation, I mean, next door, the properties are 15, 20 feet higher. Is that site subject to flooding?
Give me one moment, I will pull that. I would have to get, we'd have to zoom in a little bit closer, I think, in the version that I have right now. We don't have it at that grandeur of a level, but we can definitely look into that. What was that?
Madam Mayor, maybe the suggestion is I could follow up with staff and I can share that information with the council.
Okay. Great, thank you. Those are my questions.
And we can also, just back to your question about water temperature, there is a Valley Water Climate Action Plan in Guadalupe Watershed Planning effort that we can look at more closely and see if that does address any of the water temperature.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from council, yeah, council members?
I was just curious about the tree planting, how exactly that work? I'm assuming that one thing we do is plant trees where there might have been existing trees at one point that aren't there anymore, like alongside lots. But wouldn't it help if you just plant more trees in parks or where there already is nature? Or is this more of a, you know, city tree scraping kind of thing that helps with that?
I would say that every tree helps.
Okay.
Obviously, where you already have green space and there is some tree coverage, it helps. But trees really provide a lot of co-benefits, not just the shade, but like biologically, they also cool the air around them. But yes, there are a lot of streets in Campbell that aren't shaded. I walk a lot of places, and I recognize that personally. And, you know, from my experience working at the City of Philadelphia and their water department, we did a lot of green stormwater infrastructure. So anytime we built like a curb bump out, that project also became a stormwater project. We would put trees in tree trenches that could slow the water from overflowing, a combined sewer system. So I do think that every tree matters and counts.
Okay, great.
Great. If there's no further questions, let's go to public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? No, I'll bring it back to council for discussion, any comments? I, yes, Mayor Landry?
I just want to compliment the work that's been done to date. We've been waiting a very long time for this plan. I have my eight years I've been here. I've been waiting for this plan to come forward. You've done quite a lot of data collection, and you've, the great outreach effort, all the active events that you've been a part of, the Climate Action Committee. I just think it's so wonderful. It's wonderful in the fact that we know what we are doing. It's not wonderful in the results, but the process has been good. I see the work that's been done. I've been reading all the reports and looking at all the charts and everything. So I just really totally appreciate what we're doing, and I really look forward to how this is going to move out to solutions.
Great. Any other comments? Yes, Councilman.
Comment, question. I noticed, of course, you talked about extreme heat impacts here. I'm wondering if perhaps it's already in the more extensive report. You needed some comments about the fact that we do address that in a sense that we do open cooling centers and things like that, just to sort of indicate that we recognize the problem and we do have a solution. And likewise, for extreme cold, I know we can't really operate overnight rooms and things like that, but we do have a voucher program that we give people that find themselves especially affected by extreme cold. We think that that should have, you know, further comment in the report, just to sort of, for its more comprehensive.
I also think cooling centers are very important. And I think there's also a big, there's also a big effort being done to look at where vulnerable communities exist in the greater Santa Clara County area and where those cooling centers are, and are they accessible to vulnerable populations? So we know that we have them, but I think doing some more mapping of figuring out, are they sufficient, are they in the right places, like a great exercise as part of this cap?
Great. I'll just make a couple of comments. Also, really want to echo the mayor's. You know, I have a lot of excitement for this and what we're hearing. And while the specifics of what's being shared, things like the number of extreme heat events that we're going to have are very sobering, and I mean, it just makes a lot more real to talk about that, not in the abstract, but here in our community, the streets that we walk down. But it also brings home to me just how impactful this work will really be in something that can seem so abstract when you're talking about a plan. Really what it is, is just taking a long-range view towards what we do, what our city does every day, which things like providing parks and community gathering spaces and making sure that there's programs and services that our community needs. I really see this as doing the same thing, just on a longer time scale to make sure that, you know, by 2100, when we're having these extreme heat events, we're still, to the extent that we can, we're making Campbell a pleasant place to walk down and go out and, you know, meet up with friends in the park, all these things that we take for granted. But this really just brings home how much for us to maintain that, that small-town feel that we're so proud of. And obviously, many other things will change by then, but it's really going to take work and planning now and in the years ahead. So I'm really glad we're doing this. I think it's a great point about the, that the mayor brings up about the temperature of the water. We had a lot of excitement recently that we're the southernmost bonding ground for salmon. And just, I mean, that won't just be a Campbell issue, but if there's higher temperatures and more acidification, all these things in the water, that impacts all these things. So planning and mitigating, you know, I'm glad that that was brought up and that we're adding that. I'll also add, just because I heard a presentation on this at a different board meeting earlier today, that I heard an update about the Air District's Spare the Air program and learned that actually I had done an outreach event here in Campbell. And so just to the extent that, you know, if we're hearing things like air pollution is a major issue, thinking about how we can integrate better and work more with other agency partners like the Air District, which does, has the most successful Spare the Air program of its kind in the country, just to make sure it's really integrated with what we're putting out, because they're definitely looking to form partnerships. But just really appreciate the work, you Tiffany, our consultants, everyone working on this, and I really look forward to seeing it proceed. So do we need to take a motion for this bill? No, it's just an information item. Okay. Great, well, thank you so much for the presentation, really appreciate it. That now moves us to our last item, which is number 13, Council Committee Reports. And we'll go, maybe we'll start with you, Mayor, since we're online, and then we'll go to our in-person folks.
Great, thank you. I had the opportunity with Councilmember Bybee and Chief of Police and Vice Mayor Sergio Lopez to attend the Dewali Festival on Sunday. It was absolutely wonderful. They really made me feel welcome. They took lots of pictures. There were really young kids there celebrating the full reigns of generations. Everybody was all dressed up. They had dancers and performers. I think it was just a wonderful celebration of lights. Today was the Downtown Business Association meeting. The Captain Ian White was there to talk about, I think it was the SPECT program. We had El Luisa from our Housing Director and our new unhoused coordinator came and presented themselves to the DCBA. That was nice. And let's see what else. I think I did something last week, but I can't remember now.
That's it.
Great. Councilmembers, because I'll let you want to continue?
I've got nothing to report right now, actually.
Okay. Councilmember for Tada.
Thank you. Along with several of you, I had the opportunity to attend the special tour of the new fire, County Fire Headquarters Building.
That's it.
Into Campbell, as you know. And it's a beautiful building. The Fire Department has extensive responsibility for a variety of areas in terms of fire prevention, which is a very large element, of course, and, you know, fire suppression, of course, as well as paramedic services and a variety of things. Just for the purposes of the public, I was really impressed by the fact that they have some of the most advanced computer and dispatch systems available. So for example, the system is set up such that if there is some type of emergency requiring a fire department response, that location then immediately pinpoints the nearest fire truck or fire engine or rescue personnel that are available, and will automatically dispatch them to the emergency or to the fire so that it happens very quickly and extremely efficient. And I guess I shouldn't be amazed in this day and age of AI and a variety of things. But if you'll indulge me just for a moment, it reminds me of the time growing up here in Campbell. We used to have a totally volunteer fire department. We may have had one or two full-time firefighters, but it was a volunteer department. And there was a large siren that was mounted on the roof of the gas station at Hamilton, I'm sorry, at Winchester and Campbell Avenue. It's an ARCO station now, but years ago, it was a Chevron station. And when there was a fire in Campbell, they would turn on that siren, which had a very deep tone to it, and it would wail. Campbell being a small city, the volunteer firefighters would hear that siren. They would call the fire department, find out what the fire is, and they would drive to it. And so it's quite an improvement from those days, but it's excellent. And then finally, I just wanted to acknowledge the appreciation for the voters of Campbell for passing Measure K on the most recent ballot. It passed, or is passing still actually by over 70%. And it sort of shows, I think, that the public is very pleased with the services they receive from the city and have confidence in our ability to do that. But it also reminds us as members of the council, the set policy, and our staff that how important it is that we continue to provide that level of service to the public to meet their expectations. And it's nice when we can follow up individually with residents or business owners, leaders who have issues and problems that we might be able to work to help solve them, but at the same time, maintaining our standards and adhering to our state laws and local regulations and so on in that regard. So it sort of validates what we're doing, I think, also continues to impose. So it, it sort of validates what we're doing, I think, also continues to impose responsibilities on all of us to continue the level of service that we provide. So the public is satisfied with what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bybee.
Thank you. I attended, in addition, in addition to a couple of the events that have already been mentioned, I attended the a reception that was hosted by NASA congratulating and honoring Congresswoman Anna Eshu a couple of weeks ago. It was a very nice event attended by many cities and city representatives that she in her congressional district. So it was a really nice event. I also attended the Downtown Business Association Creepy Crawler event, and it was really well attended, almost as many people as the Oktoberfest it looked like. And I just wanted to also mention to the council that the Cities Association has confirmed the date for the holiday party, and it's now confirmed for Sunday, December eighth. Thank you.
Great. I'll mention a couple of things, the, the fire station tour and just, just one thing I to share that that I learned that I appreciated was the Advanced Public Information Communication Center that they have in the event of an emergency that I didn't know they actually opened up any neighboring agencies or city partners in the case of something like wildfires or disasters. So I'm really glad to see that kind of partnership. And when, when we see those kind of events, I hope it helps get the information out and can be a resource. The other thing that I mentioned, but I did double check and it was before, we haven't had a council meeting since then, was Oktoberfest. So I do want to appreciate the Chamber and their work on a great event, getting a lot of folks out. I also attended the forty-fifth anniversary gala for Korean American Community Services, which is Logan and Branham, so serves the West Valley community. And in these times when we're talking about things like nutrition programs and supporting our senior community, they not only do a lot of that, but do in a way that is culturally competent. And, you know, for folks who don't speak, may not speak as much English and in these times when we all need connection, really do a great job of bringing the Korean American community together to serve particularly senior citizens. So I really appreciate that. The Oh, I also attended some mayor district meetings, including learning about hydrogen and the transition. So it's very timely as we're hearing about our climate action adaptation plan. And really enjoyed the beautiful Diwali event that we had that a couple others mentioned. And it's, it's great to see that event growing. I learned a little bit more about just how much bigger and bigger it's getting very quickly. And they're hoping next year to have an even larger space because they think they'll need more capacity. So really great and appreciate that invitation. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.